Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, let's call this meeting to order for the Bellas Falls Union High School. First thing I'd like to do is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Adjustments to the agenda.
Jason?
I'd like to add executive session.
So we're gonna go to nine, actually, let's go to 10, and then we'll give director's comments before. 10 is gonna be executive session, and then 11 will be just the data right next meeting. Communication and public comments. Looks like I got a little bit community. Does everybody like to speak? No? Anybody on our TV here, John?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Who were the flowers? Is that Tara?
It's Deb.
No, I see Deb.
She's down below.
Okay, just trying to make sure I got.
We're missing Tanya, we're missing Deb.
Deb's there. That's Deb on the bottom.
Yeah, I'm here.
There you go, Jason. Okay, looks like we have a quorum, and that's what's important.
Grace, Deb.
Grace isn't a board member.
Debbie is a board member.
I got Deb, Margo, Jason, Priscilla, June, and...
Grace Morris is a student.
We're missing Tanya and Brenda.
So we got a quorum. Okay, I got it. Review and approve board minutes. I didn't see board minutes attached this time, so we're gonna do that next meeting. Reports, finance update. Jim, you're up.
Okay. This gives you an object summary, and I'll just wait until everybody's got a copy. There's also a loose page on the very back, which is the revenue sheet. So this first page, page two...
So Jim, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do you have this so that at least Deb could get it? Is it on so you could email it to her?
Well, it should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I did get that.
Okay, perfect.
So the object sheet summary is page two, which just shows you for each object, you know, and I'll just quickly go over this because this is mid-November. Now, with salary and benefits, now you're pretty well locked in. You're not gonna see a lot of changes, and I'm not saying you're never gonna see a change. Of course you will. I mean, people may leave, may choose to leave, but the majority of it's settled in. So this first section, where it says way over on the balance side, $91,00583, probably a good number. And at least you know, hey, we don't have a deficit there. We've got a positive balance. And you go down to the next section, which deal with the staff benefits, and... Staff benefits. So with staff benefits, we show at the bottom a positive balance of $174,000. Hey, that's pretty well locked and loaded. The next section, though, is where you're gonna have some variances, and the variances happen in the tuition line because, again, once we get the vocational tuitions and some of the other tuition lines come in, we're gonna start to see that balance out for sure. As you show right now, I think it's $235,000, $36,000 balance. Probably a lot of that will go away. Under supplies, you have $116,000. We've started school, you know, we're doing okay. John will probably do another buy, you know, in February for stuff he's going short on. But the big thing that we have to start keeping an eye on, and Jason knows that, I don't know what we're gonna be paying for oil. We know we bought it for $4, but wow, how much are we gonna consume? How full of a winter are we gonna get? Based on today, maybe it'll... So anyways, I just think we're gonna be in a deficit certainly for the oil, and the question is how much. But by and large, I think we're okay. I think we're balanced out enough in certain areas where we're probably gonna be able to cover what specific facility projects need to be fixed and repaired and replaced to get us through, hopefully, but I think we're okay. Now, if you're looking for the detail on some of these items, okay, on page three through... three through 13, kind of gives you the detail a little bit. And again, I don't know that the budget number means a lot, but as I say, that top line is that $153,000 for a particular set of teachers. That's what was budgeted. Now, in total, I mean, if you go down to the bottom, we budgeted for all teachers $2.3 million. And I'm on page three, and I'm looking at the bottom where it says F-111 total. Everybody find that? Molly?
No.
Okay.
Me either.
You're on page three, okay? Now, three-quarters of the way down, I hope I'm looking at the right same page.
Oh.
So it says 511 total.
I was looking at the bottom.
All right. So this just gives you, you know, those people who wanna do some analysis, it gives you a little breakdown of what it is and why we have $102,000 balance, positive balance. So, I mean, you can, if you really wanna get into doing some analytical work, this is just a help to get you there. But by and large, I just don't, I don't see any issues because I think you're gonna be able to balance everything out. Any questions on the expenditure side?
So you think I have just a huge variable right now in C1?
Yes.
If we just get everybody a sweatshirt and...
Wish it would that's it.
That's for next year, right, then? You know, because you already locked in at $397 a gallon for this whole season.
Yes, but...
On a mixed contract.
But we didn't budget for that.
They didn't budget enough, Jason. I think they budgeted at the $2 range, and so we're in the $4 range. So we're gonna be short.
You're in luck, though. You're currently getting about $1.50 less than what people can actually buy for to give it to the customer. So congratulations.
Hey, you know, I don't know what we're gonna do, though.
I don't know what normal people are gonna do.
No, and I certainly worry a lot about the elderly with the prices that are there.
That's correct.
So I think you're okay. I just don't, and I'm just gonna tell you from my standpoint, I don't think you have to spend a lot of time with this piece because I think there are real issues, the facility and some of the other curriculum piece, that you wanna spend the time on, and that's where you're at. I'll just hit the revenue page just quickly, and...
That's after 13.
This is the separate, this is the separate sheet.
Yep.
And it just gives you some analysis of the revenue. And again, under the local revenues on line four, it shows we expected somehow, and I don't know if it was tuition students, no clue, but it was $143,000 of monies we expected to have. So I'm still keeping an eye on it, and we'll track it. Ultimately, we have to, we have to come up with revenues that balance us out at $6,902, that's what we have to come up with. Other than that, we'll be in a deficit, maybe, if we don't have offsetting revenues, offsetting expenditures. So if you look down the J column, which says fiscal 2023 received revenues, it shows you what we've brought in for taxes so far, which is, if you look at line 16, that's the total property tax that we've, we have received so far, which is $1,385.
But we're looking for $3,878.
Yes, yep. So, and typically, the towns will send it in in different increments. So I think we're gonna be right on track, and I don't see any issue as well. The revenues from the state ed grant are right now, and they do it in thirds. So we have received $1,800,000 so far, which is right on track as well. So to date, the high school has received $2,393,311, down at the very bottom in the center column. So that's where you're at with revenues. I don't really see any issues. I mean, we're gonna get taxes.
So I have a question on, and Priscilla brought this to everyone's attention. This local revenue, which you thought maybe was tuition-based students that we didn't receive.
Yes.
How does that work? Because I, we always talk about how many kids come in here from another school, and you know, we wanna be, we wanna make ourselves look very appealing to kids.
Yep.
But we don't get paid for those kids when they come?
I don't, I don't believe, and I'm gonna ask Andy to weigh in, back me up, Andy, but I think school choice is free.
No, I don't believe that is correct. There should be some dollars that flow with them, but I can't speak off the top, like, I'd wanna research it.
Okay, all right. And I'm unsure.
If somebody would like to speak, but we gotta let everybody...
Just because I know we've gotten billed, I'm sorry, we've gotten billed from other schools, so yeah, I'd wanna double-check that.
Thank you.
I looked up the statute, and by statute, you're right, Jim. School choice is not billed. Tuition, if the student is a tuition student, then it is billed. So the school choice itself is not billed. You were correct on that.
Okay, all right.
So what I think what Andy's talking about is the school, the school tuitioned students rather than the school choice students.
And it could also be the special ed costs. That might be an offset that we get billed for even through school choice. I'd want, that's the piece I wanna look into, Priscilla.
David?
Really kind of a question for John. John, do we have any state-placed students from outside the district? That would be a revenue.
There was one that is, that I know of, there's one that is not fully resolved yet.
Well, state place, if they're in Athens, Crafton, Rockingham, or Westminster, you don't get any money. But if they are outside the district, then if the state has placed kids here, that's a revenue.
So we get revenue from that.
So that's my question.
We do get monies for state-placed students under the special education piece, and it just comes in. That is expected under the SU revenues, so I know they've got some expected.
David is correct, though, that if, if there was, for some reason, a student was state-placed, regular ed student who was state-placed in our SU and attended one of our buildings, so like attended the high school, then there would be a revenue stream that would follow The final report is due Wednesday, David, so folks are working on that right now, but I have not heard of anyone at the high school that's state-placed, but I could be wrong.
I might be kind of pushing Jimmy a little bit because this is his part of the meeting, but I guess I wanna just make sure I understand. So, for example, if a kid from Green Mountain loves our music program and wants to come to our school, and we don't get money for that, we don't get paid for that child?
If the school board allows, because of the special nature of the music program here, if the school board in...
In Green Mountain says they can go?
Yes. If they got the school board to say, yes, please attend that to get your music program that you want, then we would send the tuition bill.
Okay. So do we accept, probably I'm asking the wrong person, but we talk about getting kids from other schools and being attractive to other schools, but if we're not getting tuition for those children, I guess I don't understand.
Some, some are tuition, depending on their district. So for example, we had a student here from Vernon who doesn't have a designated high school. They have recommended high schools, but not designated. That student decided to come here, they got their own transport.
And we got tuition for that student.
And we got tuition from that district. We have a student from Ludlow who don't have a high school now here, and we get tuition for that student.
Do we take kids on that we don't get tuition for?
We, last I remember, which was a long time ago, and David helped me out here, when we used to have a lot going out and a little coming in, the board, and it should be in the minutes, it was somewhere in the region of 30 out and 30 in, but maybe, don't quote me on that, but we've never reached that level yet. So that might be something that we wanna relook at.
Okay. Not on the day, but...
Why don't you take Priscilla first?
It's under Title 16, Chapter 21, 822A, Public High School Choice, and it does say, unless the sending and receiving schools agree to a different arrangement, no tuition or other cost shall be charged by the receiving district or paid by the sending district for student transferring to a different high school under this section. This is school choice. It's not where kids don't have a high school in their town, then they pay tuition. It also goes on and says, provided however, a sending high school district shall pay special education and career technical education costs for resident students pursuant to the provisions of this title. Number two, a student transferring to a different high school under this section shall pay no tuition, e or other costs that is not also paid by students residing in the receiving district. The district of residence shall include within its average daily membership any student who transfers to another high school under this section. A receiving school district shall not include any student who transfers to it under this section. So we can also not include that student in our numbers if it's school choice, and we don't get any state money for them.
And I just wanna say, the state, they really go through the student data to make sure, because you can only count students in your boundaries, the ones that are, that are within your boundaries that live in those towns.
So we get that tax sheet, we could have a dozen other kids from another district in our class, in our school, but it doesn't make any difference on that tax sheet?
No, you're correct. And I would say, sometimes there are districts that really, it gets a little lopsided because it makes such a difference on, on those students, because even though your student population is way up, golly, you look at it and say, oh, they're not our students. The town of their residents really gets ownership of that increase.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. What I wanted to say, Molly, is that we, for years, have had kids from Athens going primarily down to Leland and Gray, Crafton, Green Mountain, which I think the situations you're familiar with. My neighbors in Westminster West go for Alboro. I wonder why. But what is worth bearing in mind, and this is why, you know, what we do here matters, is that there are continual attempts to create a voucher system. And if that were to come to pass, it would have huge fiscal impact on us because, as Jim has pointed out, those kids going to Leland or Gray or Green Mountain, we got the money, and those towns are essentially paying to educate them.
So it kind of balances itself out?
Well, this is, this is the thing. Right now, we're winners on this, but if the law changes, we could find ourselves in a situation where we wish we were more attractive, and I, you know, we have this conversation for years, you know, what are our goals here? And, you know, I believe that the goal here is to make this, you know, an effective, attractive high school. And, you know, we're winners now, but by golly, if, you know, that turns, then we really will need to go out and bring kids in to replace the ones traditionally go out. I'm simply mentioning this because politics is a funny thing. It creates winners and losers constantly.
No, that's a good point. I'm glad.
We're winners, but it's not any reason to slack off.
Thank you. All right, Jim, sorry to get off course a little.
So again, I would say to you, you know, right now, with the data and information that we're aware of, I mean, I think you're in a solid position, and I think you're in a perfect spot to take a look at what needs to get done with your facilities and other stuff and programming to make it attractive. So I just think now's the time.
Jim?
Jim, why are there no salaries for coaches? Nobody's submitted that bill yet?
I don't know how that all works. The one thing, because Jason, you asked me a question, when do coaches get paid? And I told you, at the end of the season, I said they get the check after they've turned in the equipment and stuff. That was an incorrect answer. I just wanna make sure you knew that.
So what is the correct?
They get paid twice, you know, mid-season and at the end. And so I wasn't aware of that.
I've been signing off on them. Do you wanna answer your question on a hard-able basis?
But there's nothing in there. There's nothing in there?
It's kinda uploaded from the cloud.
Yeah, it's in the cloud. Okay.
Well, I'm not sure if it's...
It's not in the cloud because it goes, when they go in for changes status, it's linked to a line number, so whenever they're paid out, they've gotta come out of that number.
Well, and there's, there's two pieces in the 24 budget, okay? Now, I have some coaches, I think I've got four. Now, I think you've got more than four coaches, and I mentioned to John, I don't know how much, but what I like to do in the budget, don't care about a name, but boys' basketball, girls' basketball, JV, at least have some bucket in there. You know, I don't know how much you pay, but $3,000 or...
They'll be coming in this week.
Would the coaches be under athletics?
Yes, for under the $1,400. It would be under the $1,400.
So number nine shouldn't be there. Because you've got a line, coaches on number nine, coaches' salary, 5172. It has zero.
Hold on, what page?
The first, page two.
Page two, okay. And you're saying number nine, coaches' salaries, there's nothing in there.
But when we go into 1401 athletics, there's, then some money's spent.
But that could be reps, too.
Yeah, I mean, I've gotta be able to track it because they, and this is where the coding, you know, is critical. Because if they've got a coding of 5172, they're a coach, they hit the right bucket.
But if they didn't get that coding, then they're on a line.
Yep. But I do, I do wanna, and again, I just wanna make sure we've trapped sufficient money to make sure we've covered all of our coaches and department heads as well. I think, I think I'm okay with the department heads, John.
Well, potentially, coaches for the year are $92,600.
Who'd use that?
He's got secret stuff.
From all the, as I build the budget, from all the tracking of the stuff that goes in actually.
So we, I mean, this is always gonna get tweaked, this is...
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And Jim is, you know, he's trying to make sense of, we came into quite a mess of stuff, so.
Yeah.
I would like to see coaches separated, if we can get them coded right.
Yes, and I mean, we will. We'll certainly get that. I'm sure that we're expending money for it, and I'll just, we'll try to get into the right bucket because, keep in mind, as we go forward and we start to throw away this e-finance and get into this infinite vision, that's when it's gonna be critical that we've got things set up because the flow has gotta be there.
Infinite vision, did we all hear that?
Yes.
That's our new finance.
How soon, how soon is that supposed to take effect?
July 1st.
So has the state given up on finance?
Just say...
Or have we given up?
Jim has.
No, 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 let me just say that I did have a discussion with Bill Bates, just to make sure we're covered. And he said, Jim, he said, while the state legislature has given pause in going forward with this current e-finance system, any district in Vermont can select any program that they want and stay with it. And he did, he did have some concerns with the e-finance system as a total, but he has to be very cautious because, you know, in some sense, he reports to the legislature, so, but I think they're gonna dump this like a hot potato.
Okay, thank you, Jim. I'm just gonna go down and roll call, make sure everybody's all set. Deb, you got any questions for Jim?
No, I looked over the budget earlier. I was fine with where it is right now. I'm just, again, amazed at how the state has loaned millions of dollars on, on old software that is now getting discarded. What a waste of money.
Deb, I agree with you 100%.
Margo?
I'm all set.
Jason?
Thanks, Jim.
Priscilla? June? Brenda? Dave?
All good.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
If it's all right with everyone, we're gonna let Jim go home.
Safe drive home.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Jim.
So, take this fast, Jim, you'll like it.
You're right, it's cold as it is.
So this isn't an adjustment to the agenda, but I just wanna, we've given our superintendent kind of a pass for this week, that's why he's not on this list. We are going to the principals report. Just broadly.
Okay, yeah, I've got a few items on there. So generators, as we found earlier tonight, buildings and grounds, the working circuitry and generators will begin on 11/29, not 11/28, because they have a travel day to get here. And then, once we get that up and running, which I believe they're scheduled to be done by 12/8, this will allow us to have full generator backup capability. For sports, field hockey, they made it to the state semifinal on November 1st, lost a close game to CVU. And then on Saturday, just gone by, our football team took on Mount Anthony. And unfortunately, were just picked in double overtime. It was a very, very good game. But it was sad someone had to, and then someone had to lose, especially us, but that's okay. They, they played well, they played well, and I applaud just all, both teams, well, all the teams we helped on these two occasions, two efforts. Because field hockey were narrowly beaten and football were narrowly beaten, so they're very challenging. Future program presentations, in our next few meetings, we're going to have presentations from a math teacher on financial literacy. And then in early December, one of freshman academy program and how it serves our students. Science area update, district architects completed a feasibility study for planning and our new science area, for our new science area, and they came back with a price of 49. It'll be for the board to decide if we want to spend this money, and that's one of the later items tonight, from the Haver donation to move forward with this task and give us an overall price to complete the work. So they're going to, they're going to design it, plan it, tell us just how it's going to be done, what needs to be done, and what the price would be to go with that. Our budget, we just heard some of it there for this year and our budget for next year. Tomorrow evening, the budget committee will be meeting to discuss what I see as maybe a first draft of the, the high school budget. We're in, a lot of figures are given to us. We talked a lot about what we want to get done. So hopefully tomorrow night, we'll, we'll be a little bit closer to getting the final budget. A foreplay, almost main, had three performances, November 3rd, 4th, and 5th. It was a great start, so I returned to drama at Dallas Falls Union High School. We'll now move forward with our spring musical that will incorporate many of our younger students too. The hope is to really just get the community energized again and back into, I was getting out and seeing live performances. And our work-based learning, a work-based learning program, it continues to grow. Right now, we have nine students already accessing local work. Employers include James Plumbing, J&amp;M Auto, JP Trucking, and Central Elementary. As we're taking our kids on. That's what I have for my report.
How do you, so I, I did a work-based program with a young man that has worked out extremely well. And I would be interested in, you know, putting my name in that for someone that's very interested in learning about building material.
Is that Heather Worius?
Yeah. We've done a couple, and it's been a, it's been a good experience. And one of them is still with me, so.
No, it's, it's great. Kids are really taking advantage of it. I know we have one of the, one of the kids with JP Trucking, he's looking to get a CDL, hopefully between February and May, and then when he graduates, just to get in a truck and start driving across country, so.
Well, we can't leave City of Los Angeles to one.
He's energized, energized about doing that, so it's, it's really good.
No, that's a great program.
And it's only going to continue to grow.
Well, I got two things, first off, and I've already expressed this to John. I'm really, really grateful for the amount of data that you've been producing lately about, you know, teacher loads, where we have students, our graduation rates, although I have one question around that. So I am very, very pleased that after years, and I mean years of not seeing this data, all of a sudden here it is, and it's a real piece. I appreciate that. Now, I'm curious, John. There are no dropout rates from roughly 2019 to 2022, what's the data?
You have to ask the AOE on that one. I, I don't know why they discontinued the dropout rate, but that is.
But don't we know what it is?
When we drill down. We could find, I haven't looked into finding that.
I did see that it says not.
But I, I'd be up for that challenge, for that, because it, it's got to exist, it doesn't.
Because it's not your cohort rate, John, it's the seniors who start the year. The percentage of seniors that are finishing now have shown marked improvement. And it's a good sign, I mean, that's a good example of what's useful about the data. I would like to know about the dropout rate.
I will, see if I can find it. For the last four years.
Jason?
John, last week, there was an incident reported with the girls' locker room.
Yeah.
I was wondering if you could speak to that, what your steps are.
Sure. Again, you listen to all things that are recorded. And then we begin to look into the facts of what is reported. In this particular case, it was a, a claim that the, our girls' locker room was trashed. Again, I, I, that's, that's a harsh word, and the interpretation of that can be so varied. It's just hard to explain. I've been working closely with the Bradlborough administration. All week, we're still not quite finished to get a reasonable outcome of what we feel happened. And if any, what consequences will be given. And then move forward. The, the one thing I will say for, for our school, and that's all I control, is that I will certainly be developing before basketball starts, a protocol for visiting teams that will involve a team being checked in. We will then go into any locker room, so for girls' basketball, we'll go into boys' locker room because they tend to trade off and vice versa. We will go through the condition of the room with the adult and the team that go in. We will ensure that they keep an adult with them at all times in the dressing room, which is what it should be. And certainly what we, we do wherever we go places. And then, when the event is over, we have another inspection. And if there's anything out of order, then we point it out there and then. And feel free to school for any replacement.
Best of all time. Thank you. Well.
Do you know, was anything broken anymore? Or supposedly broken, or?
They're supposedly broken is a good, is a good word, supposedly broken, yes.
And, and I just last one, say, I appreciate you doing that, appreciate you leading that. And I'm, I'm assuming if stuff was missing or kids had stuff stolen, that somebody, parents will be reimbursed for that stuff somehow, some way. I, I'm not sure, I hear, I know you're always good for your word.
Either reimbursed or recovered, yeah.
And, you know, when I was coaching here for six years, and especially with football, and I didn't coach football, but when I coached with basketball, our school always had a reputation of good when we went to other schools. And I can't, I can't tell you how many times George Lockery has won the award for best.
Sportsmanship.
Sportsmanship, thank you. Thanks for doing your job.
Jim?
Am I to understand that the coaches or a coach doesn't go into the locker room with the visiting team?
They should. And we don't have every minute of last weekend's coaches monitored. But a lot of the time, they weren't in there with them. Not all the time. I, I, they were in when they first went in because they were let in. But I would like us, I mean, I'm going to enforce that we have someone, even if it's painstakingly one of us, to ensure they have someone. And that will be sent out to all the schools that are likely to visit us. So we have our schedule, we know who's coming. All ADs will get that to share with their schools. So my hope is that when they get here, though, it's not going to be a surprise, they'll expect it, so.
Thank you. Deb, I'm going to start with you, any questions for Mr. Brody?
No, I do not, thank you very much.
Meryl?
Almost there, thanks.
Jason? Priscilla?
Danielle, he's answered.
June?
Almost there.
Brenda? David?
John has answered my questions.
Good, perfect. Ungood nay. So we're going to move on to committees. Building and grounds met earlier this evening, and so we're not going to take any action on this, but I wanted to just throw it out there so everybody knew. We are going to ask at the next meeting to talk about, have a motion to start the repair work on the driveway and parking lot, which means we, needs to get put on the ballots and match to, to get approval from the taxpayers for a bond to be able to fix from Route 5 to out by the buses. It, it'll take, you know, we've already had someone give us a, a quote two years ago. Some mishap happened in Rockingham, so they didn't get put on their ballot, so they didn't vote. So we've got to start over. But that's, that's really the big thing that came up and was something we're going to take action on. The other thing we talked a lot about was getting the school tested for PC.
PCBs.
PCBs. Before we start doing a whole bunch of other work, so that we know where our, where our school is with that. David has done a lot of research on that. Burlington?
Burlington is the prime example because their building was condemned.
Yeah, so they're looking to build a new school because of this test. So we don't want that to happen to us. We don't want to put, you know, $3 million into our HVAC system and find out that we had a problem that we should take care of first. So that is kind of the direction we ask the administration to go to, is to, is to find out how we get that tested and, and get that done. We are still waiting on M&amp;E to finish up their paperwork on the HVAC system, so we can get that upgrade going. That has been, that has had concept approval with Esser Funds. So hopefully that's, gets going. We have asked the administration to kind of, you know, kick them in the boot a little bit to get things moving because it feels like we've talked about this more than we've, you know, made any headway, so that's where we're headed to do. So we had, we had a list of things on FY23, so I'm just going to go down through them so everybody hears them, even though most of us are at the meeting. Auditorium seating is something that had concept approval through Esser. So we need to now get bids out on that so that we can get started on that. If we don't start reacting to this stuff, Esser Funds may go away before we get it done. So we need to, we need to step it up a little bit. One of the things that was on here was fire alarm upgrade, which at first I was like, why isn't that on the top of the list? But it wasn't that our fire alarms don't work or there isn't, or it isn't safe, it's that we were looking to upgrade them. So there was a voice instead of a loud alarm, a voice that said, please evacuate the building. That's something that Sean and John are going to get, are going to get a quote on and see, because it's just trying to keep up with the times. We're working on getting bids for a roof replacement for the school. That has also been a concept approval for the Esser, but we have to get the bids so that we can get project approval. And then, thanks to June, we did add one more thing to that list. I don't know how many people use this driveway that goes up to the baseball field and, and the snack shack. Those of us who work the snack shack, you know, you pack your car down here and you walk up through. It's, it's very dark. And they have put a couple extra lights in there in the last few years, but they're going to, they're going to get that area lit up better. And that, that wasn't really, I think, we didn't really give discussion on that, we just said we need more lights there because it's a, you know, we're supposed to be safe. And when it's pitch dark, it's not safe, so. We're going to get that, that walkway, there's, people put their cars up and down there, but that area lit up better. Both teams walk up and down there, a lot of, a lot of kids, and we just want it to get lit up better. So that is our goal for FY23. And we've given Sean and John some work, but I'm confident that they can get our answers and we can start moving on and, and just really starting to make a headway on some of these things. You know, I, I don't like using COVID as an excuse for anything, but it feels like when that started, we kind of stopped doing anything to our buildings and, and we got to, we got to step back in and, and start getting some of this stuff taken care of. That's all I've got for Building and Grounds, anyone want to add to it? Andy?
There we go. I just wanted to add, I sent out to the, the committee, but I'll also send out to the whole board right now, just that we got back a proposal from an architect to do, basically, look at the whole high school and come up with what it would cost to renovate multiple areas within the building. And so we will be looking to potentially get board approval for that. And that would be use of Esser Funds. And it's a, it's around $23,000 for the architect to do that work, so. And while we have the threshold, so the 23,000 is under that threshold. I just think it's a lot of money and I'd like the board's blessing on moving forward for that. So we'll have that on the next board meeting, but just wanted to make sure it was out there.
Thank you. Anyone else going to add? Okay, so we are going to move on to. Um, sure.
Policy committee met on November 9th. And we approved two policies to get to post, they haven't been posted yet because I just need to get the, Nicole. And just make sure that the corrections that we agreed to are in them, they were class policy and drug and alcohol policy. And we're still working on E1, the title policies. Next meeting will be in December.
Thank you. So this, this meeting, we've been trying to have a part of the high school kind of report to us, keep, keep everybody up to speed. And so this month, it is the guidance counselor, you know, counselors. I'm going to step away from the table because I'd like you to come up here so that the camera can catch everybody. Thank you very much for coming. Oh, we can do it. Any.
Are five of you in the guidance council department?
Yeah, I guess there's a little confusion. We were asked to come and answer some questions relating to some diversity questions. And so there's members from the diversity committee that are in as well.
So, I'm, sorry, I'm going to kind of run it from back here, okay? Can you just please introduce yourselves so that everybody knows whether you're a guidance counselor, you're with diversity, or who you are? And if you folks are part of this, if, if you can introduce yourselves also, just so everybody knows out in, out in the web world. Thank you.
Yeah, I will start, my name's Andrea Carlson and I'm a school counselor.
My name is Stuart Stroopman, I'm a Title I literacy teacher.
I'm a Title I literacy teacher, and I am the chair of the Diversity and Equity Committee. I'm the class advisor for the seniors.
My name is Laura Tabačnik, and I'm a social studies teacher here in the building. And I'm also a member of the Diversity and Equity Committee.
Hi, my name is Kelly O'Ryan. Part of my role here in the district is serving as the Equity and Title IX Coordinator, and I also serve on the Diversity and Equity Committee.
Good evening. My name is Mark Gebo, and I'm one of the school counselors for the high school.
Mark, please say your last name for us.
G-E-B-O. Thank you.
Could you repeat yours one more time? I missed a couple of them. The names one more time. Andrea Carlson.
Stuart Stroopman.
Laura Tabačnik.
Kelly O'Ryan.
Mark Gebo.
Is there one more? I'm sorry. Is there one more guidance counselor? Are we down to two?
No, just two.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. So the school board members were asked if they had any questions relating to the diversity and equity conversation that's been going on since last April or March. And so I'll just run through the questions, and you'll each answer as we decide what we do. So the first one, how, the first set Kelly is going to answer, how many bullying and harassment cases this year to date?
Okay. So there's a couple points I want to surface in this conversation. So again, all of these are specific to the high school. There's a couple different buckets, okay? One is bullying. So to date, there have been three bullying investigations here at the high school this fall. I think one of the follow-up questions that a board member had was, you know, how did the investigation come out, right? Was there a finding of responsibility? Why not? So three total bullying investigations. Two, the outcome of the investigation noted is unfounded, or there was not enough evidence to substantiate the initial report. One of those bullying cases remains open. So to date this fall, under hazing, we have not received any, or I don't think we've received any reports, nor have there been any investigations as it pertains to hazing. As it pertains to harassment, I'm also including Title IX, so sexual harassment is part of this larger umbrella. To date, there have been 15 total reports of harassment, including sexual harassment at the high school. Of those 15, three are specific to allegations of harm based on race. Two of those investigations resulted in a finding of responsibility. One, the outcome was there was, again, no evidence or not enough evidence to substantiate a finding of responsibility. There was one report specific to discrimination based on disability. The outcome of that was founded, so it was a finding of responsibility. There was one report under the Vermont HHB policy that was specific to sex-based harassment. That one was unfounded, so again, not enough evidence to substantiate. Under the Title IX umbrella, again, it's a different kind of federal oversight in terms of how we manage and respond to harm. Under that umbrella, there's been 10 reports in the high school specific to sexual harassment that could hit the Title IX threshold. So that is the only other thing I've known. I think one of the follow-up questions was the primary points of referral, you know, how is this information coming to our attention? I would say it's a pretty interesting split, a pretty even split in terms of parents initiating a complaint to someone at the school, either the complainant themselves or the person who's experienced harm coming forward to an employee or someone in the school to outline the harm, or a third party. So by third party, I mean someone who directly witnessed the harm and/or a staff member who maybe observed or, you know, heard secondhand that something was going on and brought the information, excuse me, brought the information forward to building administrator or to myself as the Title IX coordinator for follow-up. So that's the kind of the data so far this year in this specific building.
Can I just, one thing, we do a lot of things here where we use acronyms and everything, and nobody knows what that means. Can you, can you just kind of give a definition of what a Title IX is?
Sure, sure. So up until August of 2020, our district was required to follow Vermont's hazing, harassment, and bullying statute. So again, that was specific to Vermont. And so all incidents of harm as it pertained to hazing, harassment, and bullying, including sexual harassment, were handled under that statute. And there's very, very specific mandates about how the district is required to respond when they receive a report of harm, what they, how they're required to investigate, how they're required to notify. It all has to happen within a very, very tight window, approximately 10 days. In August of 2020, the federal government, through the Department of Justice, the Office of Civil Rights, updated Title IX, the federal law that governs sex-based discrimination in educational environments. And in that, in that change in August of 2020, they required that school districts respond kind of to sexual harassment differently, right? So sometimes it was handled under HHB, the Vermont law. Now, in most cases, an allegation of sexual harassment would be handled under the Title IX guidance. And they have, the federal government has issued very different requirements about how a school is required to, again, respond to and investigate and adjudicate cases of sexual harassment. So these two systems kind of work in parallel.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions? June?
I have a couple of questions. You said 25 total cases, reported cases in the high school this year already?
So we've got 10, 15, 18 total.
Okay. So do you do all of the fact-finding behind this? I spoke to someone, one of the administrators today, and they said there have only been five complaints this year. So do you do some of them, and then the administration do some of them, or? I'm just wondering. That's a big difference.
Yeah, there's a, I think the big variable there is the Title IX pieces. So under Vermont HHB, the building administrator, so here that would be John or Jenny, would complete those HHB investigations. So anything that's hazing, harassment, or bullying, so non-Title IX sexual harassment, they take the lead on evaluating an initial report, making a determination as to whether they would watch an investigation. They complete the investigations and then notify the parties and the families of any outcome. Title IX is different. So under Vermont HHB, once the school is privy to knowledge that could meet that threshold of a violation, they have a duty to respond and to respond quickly, right? Under Title IX, when I as the Title IX coordinator, and again, I serve for the district, so all the schools and for staff and students in the district, I receive a report of harm. In most cases, unlike Vermont HHB, I don't, I don't have to move forward with a formal complaint or an investigation unless the person who's reporting the harm requests that of the district. Or unless I, as the Title IX coordinator, feel like there's a report that I have to move forward with, even if the complaint doesn't want me to. So for example, the federal government is pretty clear that if I, as the Title IX coordinator, am privy to a pattern of harm, sexual harm that's happening in a community, and even if each of the people who are reporting the harm don't want to proceed with an investigation, I know there's a pattern of harm, I have a duty to protect, right? And so in that case, I will proceed. Or if I, as the Title IX coordinator, am privy to a student reporting an allegation about a staff member, even if they don't want to proceed, I have a duty to proceed. But in a lot of cases, the federal government says that I can hold that information and just provide supportive measures to the person making the complaint, and I don't have to proceed.
So you don't have to tell the administration that there were 13 extra?
Correct. Yes. So I can report out in a general sense about trends. And I did confirm this with our lawyers today before I presented this today. So unless, again, a student asks me to disclose that information to building administrators as part of them getting more support in the building. Thank you. Yep. It's coming.
Priscilla?
So you said there were 10 Title IX. And if you can't answer this question, are all of those founded, or those are not, or are those ongoing cases?
That's a great question. Those are all ongoing. Those are all ongoing. There's a linear process involved. I'm ready to do it.
Andrew, I think you have.
Um, Andy, I'm hoping that you can answer this. One of the questions was, has the anonymous box been put in the auditorium yet? If so, have we gotten anything from it yet?
Yeah, so that's an interesting question because I think originally John had proposed putting one outside of his office, which Mr. Clark had thought was a bad place for it. So I'd never had heard the auditorium. But I did check with our legal. I checked on whether we would have like an anonymous email or a box. And our legal highly counseled against it because there's a lot of liability around when you establish something like that. And who's checking it? How often is it being checked? If something is placed in there on the weekend and it doesn't get checked until, you know, the following, when we come back to school, and just as Kelly was reporting, our policies, they have a time limit based around it. So potentially, if someone makes an anonymous report on a Saturday and that doesn't get checked until a Monday, we've already crossed the 24-hour threshold for administration being notified of a complaint and not having it. So he was highly, he highly recommended against not having any anonymous reporting piece, but still having it so that, you know, that we encourage people to report. So that's the reason for, why we haven't established that yet, so.
Deb, right? Grab your hand up.
Yes, I do. I wanted to know what has happened to the 2014 implementation of a texting policy for bullying that, that I found in the newspaper. I haven't heard anything about it. However, it was reported in the Reformer that Bellas Falls was going to be using a texting program to help encourage speedier bullying reports.
I'm sorry, Deb, from 2014?
2014.
That, that's prior to my tenure, so I'm not privy to that.
I know, you know that, but maybe someone else in the administration is aware of it.
Yeah, yeah. Let me, let me back up also. The, the other piece that we do have that is on our website is there is a, the Vermont state has a reporting device that anyone can report anything to that, and they sift through it. It's really around safety. But then we've spoken with the state around that. They, they, they sort through it. If it's something that is building-related, they, they send it directly to us on the building. But, but again, Deb, I'll have to query John on the 2014 piece.
I have no recollection of that, so. My boss isn't, my last boss.
I actually remember seeing something about that, but I can't tell you because I never pursued it.
It was, actually, it was in the, it was on, it was an AP report, Associated Press, from January 26, 2014. Program at Bellas Falls Middle School allows students to electronically report harassment.
Middle school?
Middle school.
Yeah, they meant, they mentioned Chris Kibbe.
Deb, could you send that article to me? I'd be, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Right now.
Thanks, Molly. So just wanted clarifications, like when Kelly spoke. We're supposed to ask questions then, or are we done? I mean, are we moved on to?
No. We can, there's an open enrollment here. We can do whatever we want.
It's going to take me a minute to wrap my head around those numbers, and I can't. It seems like a lot, but I'm not sure if it's a lot. Do we have data for last year at this time to say, hey, we're getting better, we're getting worse? Either way, it seems like a lot, so I don't. And then follow-up to that would be, is this something that you could continue providing for us so we could kind of? No, because we want to help, just like you guys did.
I appreciate that. I think that's one of the pieces I'm working on to answer your first question, is trying to get an accurate benchmark, right, of last year and all the reports. So in the hopes of being able to go forward. You know, I've, in my trainings to date in the district, to answer, I think, your second question, you know, I've made it clear that I think it's going to get, it's going to appear to get worse before it gets better, right? Like as we strengthen our reporting outlets, as we strengthen our investigations, as we strengthen kind of our accountability mechanisms, right? I think one of the barriers that I'm hearing about that interferes with someone's desire to report harm when they have it is, yeah, just not necessarily trusting the process or trusting what the outcome's going to be. So as we build trust, as we make it clear what harm is and where it's happening, right, we're going to see an uptick. We're going to see an uptick. And I think anyone who does this work would say the same. So I think I would just, I think it's important to name that. I think it's important to name that, and I'm happy to provide ongoing updates, wherever it's helpful.
So what I think I heard you say, we don't really have any data for last year yet that we know of, or maybe there's a different committee?
I think it exists. It's just me kind of taking the time and going through all the paperwork, right? So, yeah.
Is everyone in the school building a mandated reporter who works here?
Yeah.
Did everyone sign a document, sign up?
That's a good question. I don't know how that form of accountability happens.
Do I report?
Right, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
We have trainings, actually. We have online training on mandating reporting. So one shows that we completed that training. Probably are committed.
Thank you.
Kelly, this is your first year here?
Correct.
So I think, you know, part of the reason why we asked you folks here is because back in April, Andrea had, had mentioned in a public comment that there was a lot of it. I, you know, we needed to wrap our head around that and probably should have responded quicker about, you know, where it's really going on because we couldn't find any, you know, numbers on that. So I think you explained it fairly well on what that means for us, but I do think it's, I mean, I've been on the board for a long time, I'm on the boards because I care about our kids, so, you know, if there's something going on, then, you know, I think it's important for us to hear those numbers and, and to, you know, we talk about, you know, what we have to do with the tennis courts and what we're going to do in the auditorium, but, you know, nobody, but we don't know if this doesn't get brought to our attention in a professional way so that we know. Okay, there's two guidance counselors sitting here. So, I don't know how to answer the query this up directly probably, but how do the, so you are a Title IX. Where do the guidance counselors come into this?
So I think there were some other questions that were posed initially by some board members.
As far as what guidance counselor, because the guidance counselors have to do with, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm trying to figure out. Been a long time since I've been in high school. I wouldn't think that maybe reporting those to guidance counselors because kids are more comfortable with them because they're doing other things with them. But is that where the kids go to report? I would expect they would go to the vice principal, but that's a school board mentality. That's not a 17-year-old room in high school, so.
They go all sorts of places.
And that's why everybody is to report?
I think there were some other questions that were posed initially by some board members, and I think some of my colleagues are prepared to answer, but I think we'll get at that, if that makes sense.
Perfect. Thank you.
Molly, just before we move on, and I just want to make sure I clarify this, where Jason asked about mandated reporting, that... Jason asked about mandated reporting, that bullying, hazing, and harassing may not always fall under the mandated reporting law. So I don't want it to get confused that, like, what, and I know it's gonna be answered later, but mandated reporting has specifics around it that are not around the bullying, harassment, and hazing piece. So very, 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 just want to clarify that. The other piece that I just want to mention is a lot of times around Title IX even, Ms. O'Ryan can't even tell me what's going on. She can alert me that she's investigating, but she can't give me the specifics about it. So there, a lot of times I'm left, like, just, okay, I have some knowledge, but I don't even know what's going on. And so it's grateful that we have her, that she can sort through a lot of this, but, so everyone knows. There's a lot of, it does feel a little jelloey, I guess, sometimes, because you don't have all the specifics, so, anyway.
All right, next question. I would like to know where the Diversity and Equity Committee currently stands on flying the Black Lives Matter flag at BFUHS. And Stuart's gonna take that one.
So as the, I'm a teacher in the high school, so I was aware of the process. A student brought to the, to the student council, a proposal to fly the flag, and that was brought to the board after being presented to the students to see what support looked like. The board came up with a policy that affects the flying of any flag at the school. And other than our, essentially, a statement of support for the idea, in the interest of making sure students felt included and supported, and there were specifics to that letter to have in front of me, but it was read, I believe, for the board in June, I think it was. We have no changes. It's just as, as it was left at that time. So it's really status quo on that issue.
With my permission, I raise that question. And what part of my interest is, is that, and I'm glad Grace Warias is here tonight because she did a tremendous job in a room which certainly had a few skeptics in it. But because of the fact that the school board has dispensed with the flying, the black fly, heaven help me, it's the Vermont, black flies matter, not this time of year, but they sure do in May. But let me get back on topic here. And that is this, that, that was, as I said, a tremendous effort on Grace's behalf to come in here and bring it up. Okay, school board dispensed with it, but the, I guess I would say that the dynamic behind that request, I presume, still exists. And if, in fact, that dynamic still exists, then what are we doing to, you know, address that dynamic? That's kind of why I raised the question as to where your committee was with regards to the Black Lives Matter flag. So what's cooking?
I would just say that, just speaking as the chair of the committee and the person who organizes the minutes and the agenda and that sort of thing, nothing's really cooking on that particular front. I think that, you know, there've been some statements made, some pieces written, but none of that has any bearing on, we're not working on that in any way, shape, or form as far as this committee goes that I can think of.
If I can just follow up with you very briefly, Stuart, it's not just the question of the flag, it's the question of the whole ethos of Black Lives Matter. That's what I'm interested in. Is it just kaput? Or, you know, is it, is it still a thing which motivates at least some students and faculty members in this building?
I would say that there's a broader question of issues of equity and that if Black Lives Matter concerns around that are related directly or indirectly to questions of equity, there's certainly concern and discussion around that kind of thing. You know, are people trained to be able to respond appropriately in different situations? Do our students, you know, systematically included or excluded? There's teaching techniques that teachers can learn to make sure that students don't feel singled out or targeted. So I think there's issues of equity, but I don't know if they have direct bearing on that particular environment. If they do, then there are things going on, and if they don't, then there aren't, I guess.
Molly, with your permission, that leads into the other question which I had raised, and I'm sure you've got it there on your list. And that is, I would like to know if Andrea Carlson still stands by her remarks, and this is direct quote from the April 11 minutes, "I've worked here for 20 years, and during that time, it has been reported to me that racial incidents happen regularly at BFUHS." And I'm interested in that, Andrea, because if they occur regularly, my question is, have we developed effective protocols to address those so that those who may feel victimized by, if that's, you know, an accurate characterization, that they are made whole? And, you know, what are the proactive steps that we've taken over the last 20 years to try to, you know, make this a safe environment for all kids? Maybe not just around the racial thing, but, you know, the overall safety question because it's, you know, I mean, that's, that's an easy one to consider, but, you know, we're now dealing with, you know, gender identity issues and we have a whole range of behaviors which, you know, stuck up on me all of a sudden and, you know, I shouldn't say this on camera. I'm 70 years old. I don't care, on the one hand, because it doesn't affect me, but I'm still here because I'm interested in the fact that it does have an effect on people that we're trying to educate and turn into, you know, productive citizens. So that's my question. I hope it wasn't too encompassing for you, but how are you dealing with this stuff? How do you, you know, like I said, make a kid who feels they've been victimized whole? What are you doing? Are we just as bad off as we were 20 years ago? Or are we making some progress here? And how are we making that progress?
So I, I prepared a statement to respond to your question. I don't know if, you know, we're, I was gonna explain a little bit more about my statement back in April, and then Stuart and Lauren, we're gonna share some of their experiences. We're gonna share why incidents aren't reported, what's considered mandated reporting, and then what are next steps. I don't know if you want to go through all that or just?
To quote H. Ross Payrow, "I'm all ears."
I'm gonna read because it's much easier for me. So yes, I stand by my statement that racial incidents happen regularly at BFUHS. To clarify, some of these incidents were reported, but most were not. We will discuss why shortly. I will start by clarifying what I meant by the use of the term racial incident. This includes the use of a racist word or gesture directly towards someone in a hateful way, which happens the least often. It includes someone saying something racist about another person but not directly to them, which happens more often. It includes students using racist words or making racial comments in a casual way with the assumption that it is okay to say them, which happens regularly. And it includes microaggressions, which are defined as the everyday subtle intentional and oftentimes unintentional interactions or behaviors that communicate some sort of bias towards historically marginalized groups. This happens the most often. Early on in my time here, students reported the use of the N-word along with derogatory terms or gestures for Hispanic people, Asian people, and Jewish people. Terms like towel head and terrorist, disrespecting people from Middle Eastern countries, or those who may have been mistaken as being from a Middle Eastern country, were heard during the wars, when we were in war with Iraq and Afghanistan, and early on when President Obama was elected. In the past six years, the N-word has been heard a lot. It has been found written on desks and tables as well. Students use it both directed at people, they use it when singing songs that have the word in it, or they use it casually, like, hey, N-word, what's up? Students have also reported being called words like monkey, spic, cotton picker, and smelling. They have been asked, how did you make it over the fence? And what kind of self-tanner do you use? It was also shared here at a board meeting that a student said, "Black lives don't matter" in the lunchroom. Microaggressions that have been reported include comments like, comments about a black person's hair, touching a black person's hair without permission, commenting on how well someone speaks English, calling someone an illegal alien, assuming a student who is adopted knows something about their country of origin, making racial and ethnic jokes, saying someone's name wrong when they have, when they have told you the right way many times, disregarding religious holidays, et cetera. All of these types of racial incidents impact our student sense of self and their ability to learn, and they happen regularly. I'll pass to Lauren Stuart, who can share their experiences as well.
So I will just say, I think you've covered a lot of territory, speaking as a teacher who I've been in, I think about nine districts I've taught in in Southern Vermont and two for many years in this district. I've never been in a school where these kinds of things weren't part of what teachers deal with, perthiving in the bathroom, perthiving on the desks, little comments that students make that you feel you need to address, but you don't necessarily need to make this kid's life really difficult because of perhaps a naive thing that they heard somewhere else. And also you have these teachable moments, and then sometimes you feel like this needs to be told to a mandated reporter. And then once we tell them, we don't know what happens. There's a confidential process of following up on more serious claims. So I really just want to say that it's a common experience, and it was a common experience for me growing up, where I lived in New York. It was something that I was aware of and part of in some ways when I was in sixth grade, a very long time ago. So, you know, I just want to, to really say that it's not an unusual experience in Bellas Falls or anywhere.
I can echo that, too. I've taught in Ohio and Massachusetts and here, and it's something that's all over. Certainly not immune, we're a very small state, but not immune. And in fact, I consider it almost the hardest place to talk about this kind of stuff because we don't have a lot of people of color around us, so it's not as easy to bring up. But I do it all the time, every day, and I'd like to address that proactive question that you have. But first, I want to tell you just a few things that I've seen in my classroom. I have a lot going on in my classroom. It's covered with all kinds of political propaganda as a social studies teacher. And there's a picture of a black man at a protest that says, "End police terrorism" on it. It's from a, I'm a senior national calendar that I have all in my room. And a couple weeks ago, I found a little Post-it note that was on his chest that said, "Pay your back child support, then we'll talk." So that I see as a lot of implicit bias, you know, some implicit racism there, some stuff that they might even, not even know that they're acting upon, that's just coming out. I had another kid touch a person of color's hair right on the head, like Andrea explained. I've had my posters that promote queer life vandalized in my room. I've had discussions in many circles. I incorporate circles in many of my classes and my advisory, but many of my classes as well. And I talk about a lot of stuff and race being at the center of that. And one student of color shared that racist incidents happen all the time. And I, and I looked at him, I'm like, I asked him what he did, and he just said, "Oh, I just say," you know, and he says profanity, and he goes, "They usually don't bother me after that." And, you know, that's hard to, that's hard to even have a conversation after that. I, you know, the fear of being singled out after going to one of these counselors, you know? So, so those are just a few of the examples that I encounter. But I am really proactive. And one thing that we've been doing for the last couple of years that I know that you've been talking about, too, are restorative circles, restorative practices. And that's a really great way to bring up stuff like this in our communities and small circles. And so I said I use this stuff in my classroom all the time. But we started out, and I think maybe some of you have experienced circles here, maybe you've come into the school and looked at some of them, but usually they start off with a silly question, right? And then they get into a deeper question and talk about morals or whatever. We get to know each other. And, and just recently, something happened in school where I was able to go back to my circle because something intense happened in school, and we were able to just talk about it. And we were so open with one another because we've been talking for so long together about silly stuff and just getting to know one another, getting to know what our rituals are in our families, and appreciating each other's stories. And so, you know, yes, I'm a social studies teacher, and I certainly am biased, we're all biased, and we all have political leanings, but we're so polarized that I find it my personal duty as a social studies teacher in the school is to get kids to talk across the aisle and to identify with each other's stories. So to answer your question about these things that are happening, I want to talk about it with kids. And I'm gonna make mistakes, and I'm gonna put my foot in my mouth, and so are they. We need to be able to go with that and just address it. Like Molly said, you know, if you, if these things are happening, you want to be able to address them. And that's what I want to do, too. We're all, I've heard you all say it tonight, we're all here for these kids. And so we are doing proactive things. It takes a while, though. And, and like I said, in my, when I've worked with, where there have been more kids of color, it's been so much easier. It's so much easier because kids of color can speak out, and they're 50% of the community. You know, and it's not the case here. And that hurts my heart when I see those kids not want to speak out about those things that are happening to them. So I think we're all in the same place about it, but it's happening a lot, and, and we're all here to work on the same thing, anyway.
To answer the question, why don't students report when it happens? Some students do. We've heard some of the numbers. Many students don't report, though, because they say they have a fear of retaliation and/or a belief that nothing will be done. They don't want to cause a problem with their peers, as often it's their friend making the comment. So kind of speaking to what Laura said, I mean, when you have a very, very tiny community of students who aren't white, and you, you know, it's harder to speak out because you don't feel like anybody has your back. A big thing is kids report they don't want to be a snitch. You know, stitches get stitches. As I mentioned, when there are so few students of color, there's a fear of speaking out because there's no BIPOC community at the school to back you up. There's no, I said, it's all, it's, when there are so few students of color, there's a fear of speaking out because there's no BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color community at the school to back you up.
You used one of those acronyms.
It is also difficult to know how to address the incidents that happen the most, like the report of someone using the N-word when singing a song. So you'll hear that a lot, like kids are singing, you know.
Cancel, cancel.
Kids are singing a song that has the N-word in it, and they think it's okay to say that. It's not okay.
A lot of the songs, the rap songs, a lot of them happen.
And no, nobody's, you know, the students aren't learning that. They aren't learning that that's not okay, you can't do that. And then microaggressions, as I mentioned before, just these little things that are said or done that just start to weigh on people. And a lot of kids, you know, they'll shrug it off, they'll just say, "F you." Many just don't say anything. And so another question is, you know, why, you know, obviously, I've shared a lot of what students has, has shared with me as a school counselor. Mark's gonna explain a little bit more about what mandated reporting is and why, when students share stuff with us, we can't say, "Hey, hey, hey."
Can I just, I'd like to just, not that I want to hear from you, Mark, but I am glad to see a smile come out of your face. but I am glad to see a smile come out of your face. I'm sitting here pretty stone cold here. Um, so I, I almost said I get it, but no, I don't really get it. I understand why, why that is all in this room. But a lot of what we're talking about is based around racism, is what I'm hearing. But Stuart said the words I wanted to hear. Teachable moment. So it doesn't matter whether it's, okay, I'm going to peg myself when I say it. The little kid with the insulin pump that says, oh, that's diabetes, that's because of dieting. So, you know, that's what it means. Those type of things happen. It isn't all about race or color. It's about kids that haven't been taught that you shouldn't say those kind of things. And it's all about a teachable moment. And I'm afraid that this got blown way out of proportion as far as, as far as what we are in Bellas Falls. I am not telling you that these things that you're talking about don't happen. I mean, I'm not as old as David, but I'm old enough to, been around enough to know that things happen. But I think that it's all a teachable moment, and we need to take, that needs to be what we're going for. And that's where our goal should be, is to, when we hear something, you know, when we hear something that hurts somebody, that shouldn't happen. And it isn't just about racism. It's about all of our little kiddos around here and what, you know, what people say to him and thought of him, that that's the wrong thing to say. So now we're in high school, and we're trying to teach kids that are 15, 16, 17 years old that have been hearing things that maybe aren't great, or they watch too much TV, or whatever, you know, we can make all excuses in the world, but our job or your job is, you know, to try to help all those kids. And I just don't want it to be based all around the differences of our skin. It's about just how people talk. And to help them, help them get to a better spot in life.
You know how I told you we had a, something serious go down in our school, and we use our restorative circles? That had nothing to do with race, it was about knives. You know, it had nothing to do with it. And we actually talked about creating a different, you know, we had this great discussion about the fact that we live in this rural place. We have all these hunters, and maybe it should be a new, different knife policy. You know, we had this incredible conversation about this hard issue. And the reason we could have that is because we are using this restorative practice, just like you said, restore relationships, restore the community, make that little kid feel better, make everybody in the situation feel better.
And I, you know, a lot is going to get said tonight, a lot more is going to get said. But I feel, and I felt for several months, that it kind of made our school sound like we were, you know, had this, I don't even want to say it, but this mark on us. And I think it's more than, you know, it's more than that.
Yeah. I know, I wanted to be clear that I've experienced this at just about any school.
Thank you. Jason, you're next.
So a couple of things I heard from Andrea and Kelly is, you said a lot and all the time. So for me, I'm a measured person. So like, I need like numbers, like what does a lot mean to you might be different to me? So I just want to, as we collaborate in the future, I'd like to know what exactly that means, a lot.
I can tell you that I hear something once a week, on average.
And so, and then I'd said that.
And that's just me.
Question about, you said that you were biased. So what did, what did that mean? Like bias in your teachings in social studies?
No, no, no. I was talking about the fact that in our country, we're so divided right now, right?
There's a right or a left.
Exactly, exactly. And we have biases and to not recognize, we all stand somewhere on that spectrum. And to not admit that is doing a disservice to everyone. Because what I want to do is meet everybody, wherever they are, whoever they are. Because you're, just because you're on the left side of the spectrum, and I'm on the right or vice versa, doesn't mean we're not going to agree on things. And it's not going to mean that I don't want to understand your story and know where you came from. In fact, if I get to know you and understand your story and where you came from, I'm going to appreciate and respect your opinion a lot more.
So then, when you're teaching social studies, you are making sure you're teaching both sides?
Always, every day.
Thank you for saying that, I appreciate it.
Yes, always.
And I, I agree. I think that at some point in this country, we need to come to the middle because we're kind of just ripping each other apart, you know. And that's just how I feel.
It's the rhetoric, it's the way that we talk about it. We just talk to people as people, it's just my opinion.
As my wife would say, everybody's going through something.
I would like to answer your question about, about numbers. I've had students say that they hear the N-word used casually, still very impactful and hurtful to them weekly, like if not daily.
Thank you. I hear the same information from students as well. So.
Molly, I really appreciated what you said because that was part of what I was thinking. I'm glad to see that many is talking about, working about things other than just racial, racial issue. I appreciate Grace coming. I think she did a great job of presenting. But I, and I, and I respect her, her ideas. I also was part of the community that felt that just the two flags should be up there. But the flag is separate from this issue. And what I think the board wide is for the issues of kindness and consideration and all of that to be addressed in high school. Because every student, no matter who they are at this age level, is growing, is affected by different things. No student is totally comfortable. The most popular student in the school is insecure in many ways. I was shocked at a reunion party when one of my former classmates years ago said, "Well, you never had any problems in high school." And we went on, and I thought, that doesn't sound like me. I was uncomfortable working on trying to make friends, working on trying to be part of my class and all of that. And I think every one of our students is at that point. So diversity is important because we are very diverse. We have students that are farm students. You have students from our family, students from towns, students from other issues. Those are also diversity besides just the racial issue. So I think we have to work on all of that. And I'm glad to see that maybe, I think I'm hearing that's what you're telling me, that that's what you're working on, is to include everybody.
Can I respond to that, Molly?
Absolutely.
So one thing, so I've been a school counselor here for six years. And one thing that really drew me to this community is it's a lot like the community I grew up in in Northern Vermont. It's small, it's rural. And community, just a word, means a lot here. And something that I think we do really well in this building is we operate in an advisory model. So when a student joins our building, our community, as a ninth grade student, they're assigned an advisor, which is one of the members of our faculty or staff. And that student is, spends time with that person and other students in grades nine through 12 every single day. And that's an opportunity. And the conversations are starting internally about how do we utilize this time to kind of teach and do the proactive work around compassion, kindness, caring, and using our restorative practices model and our circles to have those conversations. And we've started that work. And Laura referenced that, Kelly, all of us have referenced that, and that's been really successful. It's also really gives students an ability to become comfortable with starting with a small group of people to start to express their voice, express their thoughts, share what's happening for them. And then that information can be, we can work with that. We can support them in ways that they need to be supported. And so that's really been good. And we're looking at how we can kind of structure that and make that a bit better and looking at that for maybe even a social justice lens. So I just wanted to add that because I keep really alarmed about what you're saying.
Want to talk a little bit about mandated reporting?
Yeah, so first and foremost, before I do that, I just want to say I really appreciate having the opportunity to have this conversation and opening the dialogue, which is really powerful. This is how we begin to do the good work that we do. So Andrea and I, well, all of us in this building are mandated reporters. And as what, what was referenced earlier is we all are required to take an online, it's a two-hour mandated training, a mandated reporter training. And so what that means is that if any adult in this building suspects that one of our students is experiencing any sort of abuse or neglect, there's a process we follow. So we call a centralized intake phone number, which goes to the Department for Children and Families, and we make a report as a mandated reporter. It's not our job to investigate, it's our job to bring that information forward. And because of the age of the folks that we're supporting or the students we're supporting, I, we include them if they're comfortable with that process because they're bringing that firsthand information forward. So really, that's what mandated reporting looks like. The question was, when this information is reported to the counselors, why don't they report it? So as counselors, Andrea and I are bound by three very specific things. These three areas we, so when a student is talking to us, we hold their protected information unless they're expressing that they want to harm or kill themselves, harm or kill another person, or if someone is harming or abusing them in any way. And those are the three areas that we have to follow the mandated reporting. So there are incidents where students are bringing information that's been talked about tonight forward, and they're not comfortable. They're not comfortable having us bring it forward, but they want us to know the information. And what we're doing as a counseling department, what we're doing with administration is we're bringing this information forward. We can't share specifics, we can't share students, but we're saying, this is what was reported to us today. This is, this exists in our building. This is what our students are dealing with, this is what they're saying to us. And I think that's super important. And just like Andrea and the rest of the team has discussed, students are so fearful of retaliation and identification. And if it's a BIPOC student, it is very easy in a school of 320 students to be identified. It takes a lot of courage to speak up when injustice is happening. And so when there is a student who wants to speak up and wants to receive the support, we do, we move forward and we stand by them. We teach them first to self-advocate. We help them break down any barriers to get to that place of self-advocacy. Or if they're not comfortable, we advocate for them because that's why we're here. And that's what I would share, I'm not sure if the team would add anything to that.
The last question is, like, what are our next steps? Kelly, do you want to share what can we do moving forward?
Sure. I think I just want to acknowledge, I think, what many of my colleagues have said, and which is just expressing gratitude to what the board members have shared tonight, right? And it seems like there's a genuine eagerness to bring, bring this into the light, right? And to better understand it so we can all be accountable to making a better movement forward. And I think in that vein, I'd note, there's, there's a number of things that districts are doing around the state and I think around the country that I think we can serve as a point of inspiration for us moving forward. I know here in Vermont, there's several wonderful grants and kind of MOUs that exist to support boards in doing this work and working in close with partnership with schools and building administration. I think right up in Windsor District to the north, there's some good work happening out there. For example, certainly we need, you know, back to the data piece, right? Like we need a more comprehensive, I think, real-time and ongoing assessment of how our staff, students, and families are experiencing our climate within the district. And so I know there's conversations happening at the district level under the guidance of Shelley Wilson, Emplice's coordinator, right? Like, how do we get this instrument into the field? And how do we ensure that this instrument, this survey instrument, is accessible to all families and students and staff so we can get a real assessment of how folks are feeling, right? It's imperative that everyone from all walks of life, right, feel safe in our community and they feel a sense of belonging, right? Folks who have this, have a sense of safety and feel like they belong are far more likely to persist, right, to graduation, to find success, to remain employed in the district, to choose the district, right? So it's important that we kind of begin to that and to better understand it. And that work is starting. I think another thing that's come up, I think, Jason, yeah, you were getting it right, like again, there's going to be these reports of harm that won't necessarily trigger a gazing or harassment or bullying report or finding responsibility. Or it may trigger that, but we may not figure out who was responsible, right? But we can never forget that harm was still experienced, right? And so how do we kind of tally the harms, for lack of a better expression, right? And make sure that we're clear on what's happening? Are there patterns in what's happening, the types of harms that are happening? Where are those harms are happening? What are the best practices in responding to that harm, right? So some schools have something called like a biased response team, right? Where you can, they're charged with really looking at that. And that could be in consultation with the board or some outstanding like that. Certainly training early and often, right? We need to work in partnership as a high school, I think, more closely with the middle school to develop a clearer framework for intervention and education and build that, right, as the students get older and their ability to understand things in a more sophisticated way grows. We've got to meet them where they're at, right? And continue to do this work in advisory and elsewhere. Certainly, we need to continue to look at barriers to reporting, right? So my colleagues have spoken about retaliation. I know in my informal check-ins with some of the counselors in the district, right, fear of getting into trouble, right? Sometimes students are privy to a harm that could be a harassment threshold. But they're afraid to say something because that happened maybe when some other students were under the influence, right? And so they're afraid to say something and then get themselves or other people in trouble for another policy violation, right? So some districts have something called an amnesty policy. If you bring forward information about harm, right, in some cases, a building administrator should offer amnesty for those other pieces, right? In the interest of getting at some of those larger harms. Certainly, I think we want to better empower the students. And I've heard this time and time again from the students themselves, right? Sometimes they come forward because they're seeking support in what they could have done better, right? Or what they could do better going forward. When and if they see harm happening, they want to know how they can kind of intervene right then in the moment. And there's great trainings that exist out there throughout the country that we could bring in and offer. And I would advocate beginning at the middle school level and working in consultation with them. So I can stop there. But I would just note that there's, there's so much left that could be done. And so I guess when I look at all of this, it's, I'm optimistic that the district can address it. I certainly think we have the will to address it, but we've got to address it.
So I get this part of my thing. It's not even about, as we all do this work and have been doing it for a long time, it's not even all about students. It's about making sure the community feels comfortable coming in here. And we talk about things being said that are repeated. Andrea said something that, in a meeting that I, that I hear once a week, that no matter how it was supposed to be taken, it was taken hurtful. So as adults, you know, and we all do it, we all put our foot in our mouth, we all wish maybe we could back up and do that again. But what I hope that someday I hear from the community before I give this up is that they feel comfortable walking in that front door at that school. And that they feel welcomed and that they feel, because the only way we're going to have stronger kids is to get stronger community, stronger belts involved in whatever we're doing. And, you know, we just had a, an hour and 15-minute long building rounds meeting. That wouldn't it be great, you know, I have a background in it, but some of it, I don't have a background. Wouldn't it be great if we could pull some of those people in to support us in those kind of decisions that you made? But I do a lot of people, and people don't feel comfortable. They feel that they've put themselves out there, they're going to get embarrassed, and so they're not going to do it. And, you know, I think that, you know, And, you know, I think that, you know, all the work you're doing, there's, you know, just like every other job, there's, there's more work to be done, but the community is not, they're not comfortable. You know, it takes a lot to get a small town like this involved in things, because, you know, everybody's busy or everybody's a little, you know, apprehensive about how much they want to get involved, or what's going to happen if I say something wrong, and, and then I'm going to be told I'm dumb or whatever, you know? But that, that's real stuff. And that's why you're dealing with kids, because we're, because somehow we have to just keep trying to get the community and involved and, and comfortable. And so we have to be really careful how we talk to people too, because, you know, makes us, you know, just, it just, they take a step backwards, and when I'm on, I take a step forward.
Yumi?
So I have one more thing about, on this topic, and then I have some questions for the Guidance Counselors, which was on the agenda.
That's right.
So Thursday, I believe, is our next extended homeroom, and I'm hoping that there will be some discussion, question for the advisors to bring up around this topic of what we, and so to get the kids talking and comfortable, and then maybe next month, if there's a key thing that comes up, we can use that as the talking point for the next extended classroom? Okay. That's off, thank you.
For so long.
Yeah, there's one thing I'd really love you to work on, and that is the saying of blank, blank, blank. Oh, just kidding. Kids do it all the time. It hurts if it's said. It doesn't matter if you then add the thing, just kidding, if it's your friend, if it's somebody that's just in the classroom. I've heard that quite a few times when I was here, I always jumped on that, and I'd really love to be able to get rid of that.
You know, there's something that I talk, talk to the class on constantly, and like, you know, we talk about how, if I was blatantly saying, do you see bullying? They're like, no, we're pretty, everybody's pretty cool. And I, I bring it up and say, well, think about it differently, maybe in your friend groups, actually, because a lot of this HHB stuff frankly comes out in friend groups where they're doing exactly that. Little jokes and jabs that the whole friend group kind of giggles at, and somebody feels uncomfortable. So, I mean, what I tell kids, you know, about that, because they're, they're not going to give blanket answers, like, oh yeah, I see racist stuff in the hallway all the time, oh yeah, this, I get teased because I have blonde hair, whatever. That's not going to come out, they say everything's great, but all those little jabs happen in the friend groups. And so that's, that is something that I teach when I talk about harassment, hazing, and bullying, because it's, you don't, it's not the blatant stuff. You don't hear somebody going down the hall being really blatant with a bullying, bullying thing. Yeah, they're usually, you know, and so, and in your friend groups, you just want to be liked and accepted, just like we all talked about tonight, just like you described. You know, so we laugh at it and think it's funny, and somebody gets hurt. And so we're trying, we're working hard at it.
Jason? Um, I, I can't remember who said, but somebody had mentioned that, you know, thanked, thanked us, you know, and that we're, we want to know what's going on. And the reason is, is because our last two and a half years, all we've been doing is having really long meetings and trying to help kids, and for the 600 bucks a year that we get, pre-COVID, when, I wasn't on the board then, but pre-COVID, the meetings were like gotten over, but we actually talk about stuff, we want to fix stuff, we try to. And, you know, a lot of it goes back to parents, and, you know, that might be the next step for you folks to look at is, if they're already coming in the door like that, how do we, there's not an easy solution. So, and, and again, you guys have to, if something happens, an incident happens, you then have to build the, the child up to, hey, life's going to knock you down, you can't wear that forever. Everyone here in this building has a story of something that happened to them when they were in sixth grade. Everyone does. So you can't, can't let that determine what's going to happen. And then my question for the Guidance Counselors is, how are, how do you guys prepare, how are you guys going to prepare the kids for the road ahead and not prepare the road for the kids? Because it seems like that's what we do sometimes, we're, you know, we, my generation's at fault, we're, we're the ones that, you know, we're, what happened to us as kids, you know, we, we turn around and we, and we're, we're so protective, but the world's a tough place. So it just, that's my question for you guys, is how are you going to prepare the kids for that, when they get out, out of here? Colleges and, I mean, the numbers, we don't have a lot in AP and all that kind of stuff, yes? It's not an easy job, so.
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about that. Is that what you're looking for, like an answer to that question? So really, in my role as a school counselor, and I just want to clarify that, it might seem really ridiculous, but we are not guidance counselors. We are school counselors. Historically, guidance counselors worked with a very specific population of students who struggle, and we support all students. We support the academic, personal, social, and career development of all students and grownups. But back to your question, really, when I'm working with students, I think about self-advocacy. So advocacy, accountability, and responsibility. And it's my job as part of a faculty, being part of the faculty in this building, is to support students with understanding what those three things are, and how to independently advocate, so teaching them the skills to advocate, that could be advocating within these walls, within the greater community, within their home. The accountability piece is, we all have jobs. Anybody who knows me, if you hear me working with a student, I compare like, my job is to be here to support you, and your job is to be a student here. What does that look like? Oftentimes, we have students come in, they don't have a clue what it looks like to a student, when we get them in ninth grade, and that's kind of scary for, and so it's really teaching them a valuable lesson, and that goes back to responsibility and accountability. So when you're a student here, you're enrolled in classes, you're attending from eight to 2:45 every day, you're an active member of our community, and that could look very different for all the students. They could be athletes, they could be artists, they could be into theater, whatever that looks like, being active and being a member of the community and sharing that responsibility. When students are involved and they're active in their community, they're going to be participating, they're going to be present, they're going to be there. Personally, I can't do this job without working with families. I communicate with families from, Andrea and I both, from Freshman Academy, from that first summer visit, is when we're establishing relationships with our families. And we're continuously, and we have the good fortune of doing that, being a smaller school, building personal relationships with families, not just reaching out to them when there's a challenge or a struggle. So then when there is a challenge or a struggle, we have that developed relationship, that trust, that understanding with one another to say, this is what's happening, because that's hard. It's hard as a professional to have to say to a family, I have concerns, or this has happened and I need your support. I want them to trust me enough to know, like, that's important information, and we have to partner to support that student and move that student forward in a positive way. We do a lot of collaboration with faculty and staff, we do a lot of support within the classrooms, we do a lot of individualized meetings with students, we're, we have the good fortune of meeting with all of our ninth graders currently, we're meeting with them, checking in about their transition. We will meet with our sophomores in the spring, as well as our juniors. We just got done meeting with all of our seniors and helping them map their post-secondary pathway. And it's very individualized because of pathway, each student's pathway is very different. And so it's like, if you have 160 students, it's 160 different pathways. Being really knowledgeable about the resources within our community here in this building and the greater community really supports that. So as a counselor, I feel like it's my responsibility to have that information or to know how to resource out to get that information, and really having a parent guardian as a partner in that pathway. It's what I do. Thank you.
To answer your question more specifically, like, how, you know, how do you prepare somebody to go out into the world who might not feel comfortable coming forward on their own? I will, you know, give ideas on how to do that. I'll say, how about we go together? And so I'll often go and model, if a student's not sure how to ask for help or something like that, they're, you know, they're worried about, you know, a test with a teacher, so I, they're too scared to go on their own, so maybe we'll go together. And it's sort of just gradual coaching till they get to the point where they feel comfortable, hopefully, not doing it on their own.
I'll say a piece that I did not bring up, but I think it's personal, and this is my personal feeling, I don't feel like post-secondary education is for everybody, I don't think college is the only pathway. And I think that we, as a department, really work hard to acknowledge the varying pathways, and we have supports, like our work-based learning program, our tech centers, our trade schools, local employers, the relationships that we're developing within this community are going to be key for success. We work with our local economic development corporation in Brattleboro, who's come up and supported us in putting on a fabulous career fair last year for our students. So we're really trying to be equitable about the, at the approach for our students. Because I, I don't want to send a student who has struggled for four years in school to endure 45 to 55 to $100,000 in debt in a four-year program and have nothing come out of that if they're even able to make it to the end. So it's really making sure that we're acknowledging what works for students based upon their interests and based upon their abilities, and being able to have those conversations with them about what's obtainable versus what's not. And that's not always easy.
And it's more than just one of that.
Yeah.
Colleges are a money-making machine.
Is there any other questions for the Guidance Counselors? Do you have? I have several. Number one, do you, you Guidance Counselors do the master schedule?
Is that correct?
Do you have any assistance from the administration or?
So historically, when we came, when we started with Power School, there was, it was myself, Tina Madison, Chris Hodgson, we would, we started, then Mark came on, and the four of us would do it. And then last year, there was the three counselors, Sean Murphy and John kind of bounced in and out. And so this year, Mark and myself, and then John and Jenny.
The reason I'm asking is, as you know, it's budget season, and John provided us a list with the number of students in each class, and I'm counting out of the classes that we currently have this quarter, that there are 19 classes that have under 10 students in them, and like, four of them, four of them only have three, four students. So I'm wondering if maybe you should have waited until the second semester to offer that, or if there was an online program that those four students could have taken? It just, and then there's classes with 25 in them. So it just looks hokey when you're looking at this information. So I'm wondering what the rationality or?
Are, do you know if, off the top of your head, are the, the classes with low numbers, are they AP classes?
Yes, some of them are, yep.
So, I, I don't know when this was decided upon by the school board, but what Chris Hodgson, you know, when we were, started building the schedules, it was that we needed at least three students for an AP class. I think it was seven for an honors class, if I recall correctly, I'd have to check my notes. And then, you know, it was like 15 or so for, for a regular class. But the, but the, historically, the, you know, the low classes with a few kids are typically AP classes. Sometimes the class that has more, the art math class that has more individualized math are students who can't do it at the, at the regular pace, that is typically a smaller class as well.
And the projected numbers that we gather when students meet with us to register for their classes for the following year, those are not obviously set in stone. There are a lot of variables based upon student's ability, the curriculum in the class, the relationship with the teacher, so numbers vary, specifically at the beginning of a semester, but it can go throughout the entire semester, the end of the quarter, it really depends. And, and we're frankly seeing a lot of students who are coming in with some very serious burn gaps due to a number of reasons that we don't, I think we all know and we don't need to get into, which then raises the question about our need for remedial classes in this building in all core content areas, English, math, science, and social studies. And what are we as a community going to do to support our students? Because that is a vast need, that we're having large conversations with families currently, and it's difficult sometimes to say, we're still working on that, we're still trying to figure that out. It doesn't feel good to say that to a family, and to a parent who may not have the knowledge that we in this room.
But what if we did the AP classes, like AP Calculus, and looked at possibly doing a online college calculus class instead of that? The student would be getting the same college credit, they'd be getting a college credit for that class, just like they can take the AP test to take calculus course and possibly get, you know, college credit at the end of the year. So if we offered them online in places that have seniors, would we be better off?
So there's a young lady over there, very, very skinny, thinks like this.
So I did a presentation to Annie Hopps about this, exact subject. So I took AP Psychology two years ago, online, over the summer, and it was not a great experience. It's very difficult to pace yourself when you're taking an online class, it's very difficult to get help when you have an online teacher who isn't there or who's in a different time zone, whatever. Sorry. AP Calculus is one of the hardest schools, uh, classes that the school offers, and I think that making that online would be honestly not helping the students. I would say, if your issue is low enrollment, then focus on improving enrollment and, and pushing students to take harder classes, because if you start pushing these harder classes to be online or to be whatever, then your students are going to go to other schools where they can take them in person, and then you're going to have like a little brain drain of the, the community.
Let me ask you a question, please. I'm, I'm very interested because I sit on the Tech Center Board in Springfield, and we are the Board of Control for the Vermont Virtual Learning Collaborative Online Class. Hey.
I took, uh, psychology, oh, you want to know who that?
Is it, is it, is it my institution, is it BYU?
I took it with VTBLC.
Okay. And, and that's the kind of feedback I'm looking for.
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't necessarily a negative experience because of the course design, it was rather a negative experience because of timing and the fact that there were no due dates, so it was very difficult to prioritize, you know, so that kills the bottom of the list and takes you a while. I mean.
One, one more question, Molly. What would have made that a better experience for you?
Well, I would say having someone in the building that I could meet with to discuss the class.
Proctor.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. But, I mean, that was kind of something that I chose to do. But a class such as AP Calculus, which I think is, you know, for me, a necessity to take for college, that is something that, you know, I would kind of feel, if you made it online, would be a requirement to take. And so it would, it would be a bit more frustrating since that, that would feel less like a choice and more like a, oh, this is a class that I feel I need to take, and I don't have the resources needed to successfully, you know, do well.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'd like to see an, an in-person college AP, in place of AP Calculus, maybe an in-person, and maybe not calculus, but maybe other, other classes that the student could get credit for at, at that last high school level, because that's part of what our state is going for also, even to the, even to the degree of allowing a senior to take.
Even to the, even to the degree of allowing a senior to take a full program at a college and get credit, which costs them a lot less and they can get through their program and not owe quite so much money.
You're talking about an in-person, online?
Well, you can do in-person at CCU.
Dual enrollment.
Those kinds of things.
Margaret?
First, Mary, thank you very much for speaking up and sharing your experiences. And I think that's really important for all of us to hear. We don't get to hear enough of that at our meetings. And I, it's very evident that there's a lot to be said around this topic. And I'm concerned that we've sort of strayed from sort of, I, I guess there was, you know, things unclear on the agenda. But this is a topic in and of itself that I think deserves a lot of time and probably not where we're at. And so I think we need to keep having conversations around it. And, but I just want to acknowledge that I think, because I know I personally have a lot to say about this topic, both as a parent and as a school board member, and I'm sure others do too, but I don't feel like tonight is the place to do that.
Not knowing that that, like that, that this was supposed to be the, the school counselor's presentation, much like the math department.
Yeah, that's what we thought it was.
We would be, yeah, we didn't know that.
That's what we asked for.
We would, we would be happy to come and, and do, I would love to share everything we do. And not just the, you know, Mark really encapsulated a lot of it in a nutshell, but we do a lot and I would love to share that and, and agree. Like then we would have more time to answer more questions.
I would love to come back. Like Andrea said, we presented before to the board in the past, I think my first year when I was hired. And we, we have a very detailed presentation of what it is that we do. Because some folks don't understand completely the complexities of our job. We hold the school in half.
Jason, you had a question?
No, I just want to represent ladies and gentlemen. Oh, what is your last name?
Uh, Wallace.
Are you related to Ian?
I, yeah, he's my brother.
Oh, okay, I know Ian.
What's your first name?
Mary.
Mary. Thank you for speaking up, Mary. Senior? Quick roundtable, are we good with what was the guidance counselor, but we've got a whole bunch more out of us tonight?
Well, are we going to put the guidance counselors on the next agenda?
We have two before them now that we've already asked.
All right, can I ask my last two questions then?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do you have a program that helps you find secondary schools offering certain degrees within a defined radius? That you can add details to, to filter out, you know, like nursing program within a two out for a radius? That has a field hockey program and stuff like that that can, you do, okay.
Yeah, there's an excellent program which we used a lot during COVID called College Express. And that program gives students the opportunity, and why we used it during COVID is they have fantastic virtual tours of campuses in the school. So when students couldn't get there, that was like the next best thing. But as far as breaking it down to specific information that a student and a family is looking for, absolutely.
And can you walk me through what a typical day is like if a guidance counselor, is there such a thing?
Maybe.
One of the reasons why I love my job is that I never know what is going to happen. I have a schedule that's jam-packed every day and I almost never can stick to that because inevitably I'll have a student in my doorway in tears and that's what I do at that moment. So maybe when we present, we can, we can give you a snapshot.
Perfect.
A successful typical day for us is that we're spending more time with students and less time with adults. And as a department, we are on the same page and that's a philosophy of ours and we make that a priority. And the beauty of working in a small school, we can do that. We have assigned students, but we know about every student. So if one of us is busy, the other person can help.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Thank you.
We've missed dinner. I think your people would get hungry.
Does anybody need a run? Are we good? So unfinished old business, are we ready, everyone?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I thought I had something, but, oh, I did. Andy, did you have something you wanted to talk about? Unfinished business you wanted to talk about? Oh, darn it. I know there was something you told me.
I, I am, I am honestly drawing a blank, Molly, so I apologize.
Unfinish your old business. We're going to move on to that. We're going to go to new business.
That's it.
And that is, Andy, is that you or John with the Haver? John's raising his hand.
So, I mean, John, I mean, all, all we're asking is just for board approval to expend, keepers, I guess. I shut the program, expend $14,900 from the Haver donation to be used for a feasibility study for planning and cost analysis for the science area.
Okay, so.
June has a question.
June, you want to make that motion?
I have one question first. The Haver committee agreed to this.
Yes.
So, so, so I, I, I guess really in, in Robert's rules not to be a stickler to it, you should, you should probably have the motion and then have discussion around that motion.
Question to, to. To, I'll make the motion to accept the Haver committee's recommendations to spend $14,900 of their donation for the science lab feasibility study, planning and cost analysis.
Okay, there is a motion on the table and June has a question.
I just wanted to make sure that the Haver committee, because I know that's a thing, is okay with that.
I, I was, I was there and it was, as John just said, a unanimous.
Perfect. I don't want to spend their money without their consent, so.
Okay, are we ready for a vote?
This is just a plan, it though. This is not to do anything, so we're just looking for a plan for it. It's a lot of money.
They'll plan it all out. They will do the bid spec. They will get the price of the job from different people for us. They'll do all that.
Thank you, John.
It's a lot of money.
Margaret, how would you like the?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passed.
No, Deb left. She had to leave.
Okay, so the next thing we're going to do is director's comments before we go into executive session. Margaret?
I just, I'm really happy that we are having different departments and committees come to speak with the board. I think it's helping us understand how the school functions more and gets us more involved. So I'm really appreciating that. And.
Jason? Priscilla?
Just glad that they're working on the consideration and kindness that is necessary and for every number to ascribe to in our community.
June. Set, thank you.
Brenda? David?
Do we no longer have a graph in rep?
Oh!
Thank you, David.
So, I'm, thank you. I, I, that is on me. So she emailed me and every time after we have a meeting, I say, I didn't put that on the agenda. And now I'm embarrassed to say, I can't remember her name.
Pamela.
Pamela.
Spurlock.
Spurlock. Thank you, David. So she sent in a letter of resignation that she just, her personal life was too busy and, and she couldn't do it anymore. We had had some conversations before. You know, she really wanted to do it. She's very interested, but just couldn't pull it off. Maybe when her kids get older, she can, she can be here, but thank you very much. I, I keep forgetting to say that. So we need someone from Raffin.
We need to accept her resignation.
We put our next one together.
Well, I accepted it.
The board has to accept it.
We will put that on next agenda, Priscilla. So, thank you, David. I have no comments and Jason, please make a motion to go into executive session.
Molly, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the student matter.
And.
Where premature public knowledge could place the individual or, and the board at a disadvantage, then invite the administration.
Am I invited or not?
The administration.
So.
Andy can do that, can't he? So.
Yeah, I, I'm going to do it right now. So just as soon as I hear that you, have you passed that? Has everyone agreed to do that?
Jason?
Yes.
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 Yes.